Need a motion on item number six.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Marvin Noah?
Yes.
Arthur Perry?
Yes.
This time we're going to jump back up to number five, open discussion concerning jail financing of the debt. Anybody has any questions? Comments?
We had a meeting with you, Paul, earlier this week. And we wondered what action you'd take on that.
I don't know. We let everybody know what my idea was and what we talked about. Was when you do a budget, you have line items. And I thought I could go through the whole process. I mean, my opinion was or my thoughts were for the $120,000 on a line item budget for the jail debt. Even if it takes 60, 70,000 or 80, I mean, give or take, Randy, you'd agree, we don't know the exact amount, but somewhere between 60 and 80,000. Therefore, some of that, whatever's left would roll over for next year, which I don't think is going to be a... I don't know if that's doable till the end of the payment, but it will suffice the debt in April. And that was my suggestion. To pay the line item $120,000 for the debt of the jail in April 2017.
And with that, we expressed that we would like to have the county CPA, Kerry Patton, meet with all of us and commissioners and three of us or as many as want to attend to see the sustainability of it as to timeframe. Do you agree with that, Gail? That we need to see not only just putting it on there if that's the solution, but before we decide to do that in a final motion, that is it sustainable and if it is, for how long? Understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. And I'm telling you now, I don't know if it's sustainable. But I do believe, I do believe it's doable for this year.
That's why we would want to engage Kerry Patton to find that out.
And we will.
If it is engageable or if it is sustainable or not, and if it's not sustainable, then start doing something, making a plan as to what we can do to continue on with it. And you're in agreement with that?
Yeah.
I mean, I...
Morning.
I'm all agree and put the line item in there. So you want to, you know, we just don't carry.
Okay. Okay, so we all agree that we're going to talk to Kerry Patton? And who is available from the commissioner's side to meet with Kerry? If we need to travel to him or he needs to come to us, who's available to meet all of you?
Clark can go, but it's not going to be, I mean, we're just talking a few weeks. How long is it going to be till he comes down to county? We haven't received anything, I think eight other counties, but it's not going to be too long. He'll be here.
And you'd be committed to traveling to the, is he at Stillwater from that where he's from?
Oh, unless I spoke somewhere close to Tulsa, somewhere near or somewhere in that area.
You're agreeing to travel there if we need to. So Clark, you're on board with doing that? Marvin, you're on board with doing it? And Paul, you're on board?
Oh, you're talking about the 120?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that is.
Just what we just discussed.
Right. Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, the other item we discussed, the assembly of the authority. What have you got with that?
Well, figured out if we do, trying to correct my words, a jail trust authority, you have to go out for a vote of the people. And if you do a county trust authority, you do not have to go out for a vote of the people. And I personally would need to talk to bond attorney or trust attorney, trust authority attorney, figure out which one we're going to need to do. But I do know if you go out for a county jail trust authority, it goes to the vote of the people. And if we do a trust authority, county trust authority and leave the word jail out of it, you do not have to go out for a vote of the people.
And where'd you obtain that information?
Off the website. Well, I mean, I have it in there. There's two ways you can go about it.
Is Steve the max up there?
Max is wrong. Steve's here.
That's the county jail that started out.
Steve out there?
The other one that's...
That man that was sitting there?
We have that.
He's not there now.
Okay, so would you agree at this time that we need to hire outside counsel?
I need it because I need some questions answered for myself.
And to clear up some matters that brought up last time. Jeffrey Alees name was brought up. And I understand the opinion of the two commissioners that they don't really want to use him as that Brad Clark. That how you feel?
No, that's not necessarily what I see of him.
I found, hey Marvin, when you was talking to the architect, he ever given that guy's name?
He did. He folks got back, but he hadn't yet. Of course, that was just Friday when I talked to that, he said he wouldn't give it.
Well, I'll be at Oklahoma City Wednesday. At that conference there, there may be another bond attorney if there, I don't... They set up a lot of booths, I mean, I can check around Wednesday because I'll be at Edco. And see what we can come up with.
So you'd rather go to the Edco show and see if there's one there or you want to engage one?
Who do you have that we can engage?
Alan Brooks.
Alan, and where's he out of?
Oklahoma City.
I have no problem talking to him, but...
Marvin, he is the same attorney that Sid is.
I know that.
I didn't know that, but before I get my decision, I like to talk to the architect and see what this one is that he's got.
But he says he's highly recommended to.
And we're okay, that's fine. When are you going to talk to Kim Reeves, the architect?
I'll talk to him Friday. And he's going to get with me today and tell me. If he don't call, I'll call him and get his right.
Well, everybody understands here that there's only two ways that it can be done. So I don't know, we've been talking about doing this for eight months now. And we're still putting it off another week or two to check the references of another attorney. These people are highly recommended. I don't know why Marvin doesn't want to work with him.
I'll talk to him about this other one too.
Okay, so...
It may be the same person. Not that many out there.
You're going to get that done this week, Paul? And will you report that to us before the meeting? Paul, did you talk to the other two commissioners about putting this back on the authority?
No, I have not.
Are you going to?
You're talking about a trust authority of the advisory board committee?
Trust authority.
Well, that's the, that's the reason, Randy, after doing the research I've done, and not to the delay of the stall or... But if we go through the jail trust authority, it's not necessarily going to be left up to the commissioners. If we do a county trust authority, then it will be left up to the commissioners. And there's a lot of questions that I don't have answered that's red flags been thought of. Like if we do a county jail trust authority, then the way it raises, the sheriff will be over the trust authority. Then the district, a judge will appoint one. You know, they get appointed in different ways. And if we do the other way, the county trust authority, you know, the commissioners can appoint them. And that's what I was telling you the other day when we met. There's a lot of question, there's a lot of nuts and bolts that go into forming this that that's the reason I think we need to seek legal counsel and then we can make our decisions. Because, yes, if we go through the county trust authority, the commissioners can appoint. If we go the other way, it's probably not going to be left up to the commissioners. Randy?
Okay, in the event, Marvin, that this person that Kim Reeves is going to recommend to you that you're not happy or satisfied with or the commissioner's not happy, are you okay doing business with Alan Brooks in the event this fellow does?
If he doesn't pen out, yes.
Clark? Are you going to bring the business with him?
Just to draw up this product?
Yeah.
Is that what's from that?
Paul?
I have no problem using them, but we need to be talking to somebody.
I agree with that, I appreciate it. Since we're discussing the jail matters, I understand you had a meeting. Paul, are you the president of the meeting? Marvin, Kim Reeves, you're the only one there?
We took some more pictures and he's going to give us a, a separate report. And he said he should have it in the next few days. He said on the change orders, there was five. He's looked at and then we should have had 200 and something thousand dollars that shouldn't be in. We should have got that. And according to I know, according to he can tell, we never had to give any of that back.
Okay, although you might mention again that in part of the contract to construct the jail was to furnish the equipment to the construction jail. Part of that was personnel. And that was never furnished. They weren't, it was outside, nobody was there. And if those people, if we paid for that lift in the contract, then they need to furnish it.
Okay.
And I can tell you how much they cost because the new one that's up there at the jail I paid for and it's on loan to them right now and they're right under $20,000. And that's worth doing something about.
I'll be seeing architect Wednesday.
I mean, if it was in the contract for them to supply that equipment, it should be there.
I can talk to Matt, I can ask Matt that Wednesday, he'll be there.
And who's Matt?
Matt Reeves is with AIP, Architectural Firm.
If you talk to Kim, he would.
He'll be there too.
Mention that to Kim, I mean, if we don't call it today, then have him look into that matter. Because he's got the construction plans and all the equipment that this is supposed to be headed to it. We've got an impartial or incomplete set, so we can't find everything we need in it. So if you could mention that to them, I mean, they need to be held accountable for it. That's supposed to be supplied, it needs to be there. There's 46 prisoners up there today. They're having air conditioning problems. One unit, the compressor's out on it. And they've got an estimate to repair it for under $2,500. And that was brought to me by Brian Hale, not in a meeting, but just in a conversation. I looked at the quote. It's a pretty good sized compressor. I mean, it doesn't look like it's out of line or anything. But they expect that one completely out up there. That's something that we need to address.
And did you order some compressors to sound turn in?
We did, we did order a compressor. We had one that was, would come on and then kick itself off at the thermal unit to keep protecting itself. And for some reason, that compressor that we ordered that was there, we're probably, we were researching it, started working and it's still working. But we do have a spare compressor for it, but it will not fit the other unit. There's five different sized compressors up there. Some of them have two of the same, some of them have one large one, some of them have smaller ones. They're, none of them all exactly the same. Now, the nine units that are up there, there's five compressors that are compatible for it on.
So the one we still have, that fire will fit something up there?
Yes.
And I was told that it wouldn't fit?
It won't fit that unit, but it would fit the other unit. In reality, when you're maintaining a facility like that, you should have a spare compressor on shelves for everyone.
I would sit the jail first, get proud of your camera more today. I think we need to, one thing that might help us is having bondsman there every morning. You know, because I walked through there and I had a lot of prisoners asking me if I was a bondsman and bond them out. Because I don't know if they had the opportunity to talk to a bondsman or they haven't, I don't know. But I know four or five of them asking me to bond them out. I said, well, I'm not a bond...
You can help?
I can't help you on that, but I'm just saying, you know, and I'm not to say, I don't know what, I don't know what they was in there for, I don't know if they could bond, but if you could bond them out and they had the money to get bonded out, they need to be out and not cost.
I agree with that. I think that there ought to be, there ought to be at least 15 bond numbers up there. Different bonds companies, they ought to have a column.
Agreed.
I was visiting with Brian this morning and he's going to say for the next couple of days that he's got to take to prison. And he said, well, if we get, you know, paid for it for him.
Transport?
Yeah.
Gail, do you have any comments on Paul's plan of action there?
On the $120,000, I said we was going to make a line item budget. And we was going to let Kerry run through the numbers and then see what it, see what it would do and how it would live.
Yeah, take a drive. See how it comes out, that's all I know.
What is your take on it? I mean, how do you feel? And I know you don't think it's sustainable. And what I'm wondering is, and a lot of other people is, is how long is it sustainable? And then what do we need to do? When we find out if it's sustainable or not, when it will create a real problem, if so, what do we do about it then or before then? So that's what we're trying to do, is to try to find out some other means of helping if it's not sustainable. And if it is, then how long? Is it one year, two years, or three years?
The way that Kerry talked, probably a year. The way I understood him.
Okay, who's going to contact Kerry? Kerry?
My lady.
You want me to call him?
I don't give a call him, I mean, I'm thinking, I was trying to think when he came down. August or September is when he's here, I mean...
Well, this is August and this is this week, and I'd like to know something by next week at the latest.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Randy, until he gets our numbers, I don't know if he's going to know that.
Okay, then do you have any objection to me calling Kerry?
No, I do, I do not have any objection. I'm just saying he, he may not have all his information, but you want to call him up? Does the schools, they got all their estimate and needs in?
If we do engage him, other than when he comes down, it's going to be more expense.
Well, for him, just to speak to him on the phone.
If he charges me for a phone call, I'll pay for it. I know what you're saying, yeah.
I don't think he'll charge you for a phone call, but I understand what you're saying, Clark. But I just said, Randy wants to call him, call him. But I just don't know if he'll have all his figures on hand at this particular time. But the schools haven't even got their budgets in yet for the estimate and needs and...
When Kerry comes down here, that's all he's going to come down here for the first time is just to get all of his figures. Then he goes back and then he figures the budget and then comes back. So he doesn't have any of the figures yet.
We haven't got it all in yet from the, that's what I'm saying, from the schools and the other places.
What we need doesn't really pertain to the schools.
I hope it doesn't.
I guess, Gail, could you produce what you have up to date? What you've accumulated up to date or what it's been up to date? So that when I call him, that I've got a figure that we can discuss.
From the first of July, is that what you're saying? For the end of the fiscal year? That's what he's going to go by.
Which is then?
The budget is, yeah. He's going to do the budget according to what we had at the end of the fiscal year.
And that's what we needed.
Which, yeah, I have the financial statement that shows all the funds and how much was in them as of the end of June.
And you can give me a copy of that or, okay, this afternoon?
It come, it come through here.
Yeah, I know, I saw it or glanced at it, wanted to get a copy of it. Paul, in doing all this, and I know this is a little bit touchy for some of you, but bear with me through it. What we've done is we've, by the vote, we've got a half cent sales tax pledge to the debt. Plus refinancing took place, we pledged another quarter cent. And I know that we've had talk and discussion about whether it was legal or not or whatever, but in making a commitment to doing this $120,000 in addition to it, we have made a pledge to a bank that we do business with, this county. So I think it's vital that we bring them into the process and to see what their comments are before we make any decisions pertaining to that.
Pertaining to the $120,000?
Yes.
You're the white, go ahead.
Because we, we have already pledged this and agreed to pay it and we have not. And, you know, as the audit, you know, up to the end of 2014, '15, we were 185.7 short and then we dropped from there till now, which is going to be that much or more again. So with that all being said, and it's in the audit, if you don't understand it, I'll take the time to show it to you.
Yeah, I've read the audit and I've talked about taking a real audit.
But what I'm saying is, is that we, because we have made an agreement with this banking firm that we have not held up to and not fulfilled our obligation, then we need to involve them into our plan of action here as to earmark the $120,000.
Well, I disagree with that statement in some respects because if you read the agreement about the quarter percent, which I don't think is legal, but I'm not an attorney, it plainly says in there, "only used if needed." And the surplus would go back to the jail or to the county M and O. So far, so far, we haven't needed, I'm sorry, Clark.
Excuse me, a portion necessary of the one quarter, not the whole one quarter. Whatever is necessary to pay any insufficiencies.
And I agree with that.
So when we, if we put the $120,000, if it's doable, which I think it is, but we're waiting here from Kerry. And you said the payment was going to be 61 to 65. And I agree, Randy, nobody knows the exact cause of tax. It could be 75 or maybe even 80. And we have 120. The debt's going to be satisfied. And therefore, right there, then we're not liable to put the quarter cent in that.
And I, and I agree with all that, Paul, but what I'm saying is, is we obligated ourselves to that. And we need to involve the bank to let them know what our intent is and what we're going to do.
Fair enough.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted you to do.
That's fair enough.
To clarify this, is that we need to discuss it with them because as long as we make the payment, they're, in the past, they've been willing to work with us. But as it comes to a point where we're having difficulty, it's going to be a different deal. And they need to be on board before we're done.
Fair enough, I agree. Fair enough, I agree.
Comes a question of persons for the authority. Clark, you adamant about us not being on there?
Yes, sir.
Marvin?
Yes, sir.
Paul?
Until we figure out what we're gonna do, I don't believe anybody can answer that question, Randy, because like I said, it depends on how it's set up, we, if it's certain, you know, we may not even have a choice in it. But I do, I do believe this, if, I don't know how it's gonna be set up, but if it, if it is set up, I do think there needs to be somebody from District Three on there, each district. I do, it definitely, in a way, I'd vote with having somebody from representing the whole county.
That's given.
But we don't even know how we're gonna set it up yet.
That's given. You're gonna leave, you're gonna need a lot more than just people from each district. You're gonna need some people that's gonna go out and work for trying to get some funds to help pay for this thing and keep it up and running. And everybody seems to be focused on putting five or seven people on it, you might need to have fifteen or sixteen or seventeen people on it to help you get, to keep it going.
I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying, until, we, that's the reason I told you earlier in the meeting, we need some legal advice on how, which direction to go setting up a public trust. Because like I said, right here, the county jail trust authority, if we went that way, it's not really gonna matter what the commissioners think, we're gonna go as good as the people. If we go the other way, then the commissions would have a say. But we don't even know which, which way we need to go yet until we get some legal advice.
How do you feel personally, though, about these three guys? Do you want them on there, do you not? Yes or no?
That's not a yes, no, I don't know. I don't know which way we're going.
I was just asking, how do you feel about them three being on there? Either say you don't want them, or you do. Clark said he didn't, Mark said he didn't, or Mark?
I said, I, I, until I get, I'm through giving answers that I don't know, because I always get called on them, until I talk to, and get some advice from an attorney on which direction we're going, then I will answer your question.
I was just asking, it's personal.
I appreciate that, but I'm, you know, when you answer something that you're not prepared to answer, you, I've learned, you know, you're gonna get called on, and I would rather seek some legal advice on how these are set up. And like I say, what I've learned doing my research, say you do the county trust authority, so you go that way, but there's still a lot of things that have to be implemented into that. There's still a lot of questions that have to be answered. And on the, the power you give them, the finances, and that there's, I have it in there, the list, all these, there's just too much to answer.
Do you still feel the same way that you did about Jeff Raely?
I feel, I feel like Jeff Raely could have led the county down a different path, you know, he should have warned us that, hey, you're overstepping your bounds, a half a cent's not gonna pay this, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I know when hard times show up, everybody's looking for somebody to blame. I understand that. But like I said once before, no commissioner sitting on this board right now, went out and built a seven point nine million dollar jail on a half a cent sales tax that was not sustainable and could not pay for it. We were handed that problem. And we're just trying to deal with it. And you know, and I understand people wanna blame people, and that's fine, you can blame me if you want to. But I, but I mean, not just you, I'm talking about the public. But the, the simple fact is, is that we're just trying to deal with it.
Well, I was just wondering on your deal with Jeff Raely, because I've asked you before and.
I think Jeff Raely should have, in my opinion, and Jeff's here, and I've told him this, because I see him every, every three months at Adco. I said, you should have told the county that, and I even called Bank First and I asked Tammy. I said, Tammy, why would you keep making bonds to Haskell County against the half a cent sales tax? Cause all the numbers you had to go by was from oh-six back. Oh-seven was the best tax Haskell County's ever seen and never will see, I'm right, well, in the future. And they keep talking about oh-seven numbers, I said, how'd you have oh-seven numbers in oh-six? And her answer to me was, I don't know. And I said, well, when you spend seven point nine million dollars, I don't know is not an answer to me. But yes, I think Jeff could, should have pointed the county in a different direction.
You still believe he's not trustworthy, do you?
I don't think he helped the county out, but he should have, he should have strayed them away from that size of a jail. With the half a cent sales tax going, doing the five-year average from two thousand six to two thousand one, averaging what a half a cent would have brought in, it doesn't compute to then ever make the payment. And yes, I feel, I feel like Jeff should have told the county, I mean, I think he should have told the three commissioners at that point in time, you, you can't make this payment.
Well, the only reason I ask that question is because when we talked in that meeting, at the time, I asked you if you trusted him. And you said, no. And I wanted to make sure that you hadn't changed your mind, and if you had, I wanted to know why you changed your mind on it.
Only reason I brought up using him, and I'm, and I'm telling you, before this committee was ever formed, I called the Attorney General, every person I talked to, like I said before, led me back to Floyd Law Firm. I even called some bond attorneys in Arkansas, and they cannot, they do not have a license to work in Oklahoma. I didn't know who else to turn to, and you know, but.
Well, I just want your feelings, and make, make sure you still feel the same way that you did.
I would like to, I would personally like to use somebody, but, and Randy says he has somebody, maybe we can use him, you know? But I do feel like Jeff Raely could have, well, that, could have led us down a different path, you know, that'd have been better for us. Because I asked the same question before I even come commissioner, I asked Sam Coles, I said, Sam, how is you gonna put that big jail across the road? Here where Cross Telephone is, and he said, well, we wasn't gonna build a jail that big. And I'm like, well, why did you build, just, I'm glad nobody gave them forty acres, because they give them ten, and look what they, I mean. So, I don't know why they built a jail that big, I wasn't here.
In Tammy Eagle's defense, she doesn't, she doesn't make the bonds.
That's true. She, she, she just handles.
The deal was done, and they handed the terms, said, this is part of your job.
That's true.
So she doesn't make, she's not one of those.
But that's who you're talking to, is Tammy, you're right, I'm not blaming Tammy. I'm just saying, that's the only person.
Well, I'm not sure an attorney would be the one to blame either. He's an attorney for drawing up legal papers, he's not a financer. Correct? I mean, as far as.
He's a bond attorney, he deals with numbers.
Did he sit down with the county budget and figure what we could afford?
Yeah, we paid him for legal advice.
Yes.
I realize we paid him for legal advice, I'm talking about financial advice, did, did.
Well, that, that is his job.
Did he sit down with the county budget and look at that, was that his job, to determine if we could afford it or not, or was that? You know, the counties.
Yes, I believe it's his job, because he's the one, and what I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, from what I've been told, he's preparing this to sell the bonds.
And he, if it's not financially feasible, then.
He's not supposed to do it.
Probably, they had, they had financial advisors.
And the county paid him pretty good to come up with those numbers.
Paid him well.
Real good.
When they also said, predicted that taxes would go up every year too, and then they went down.
Well, the problem I have, when I talked to them at Norman, at the conference, they keep calling two thousand seven numbers. They kept saying, in two thousand seven, your numbers are working, that's when I said, how can you use two thousand seven numbers when y'all was working on this in oh-six? Actually, it was oh-five, wasn't it? Well, oh-five, but, but if you look, there wasn't a whole lot of difference between oh-five and oh-six, but you're right, Rick, it's oh-five. Oh-seven's when it spiked. And I still ain't figured out how they come up with oh-seven numbers back in oh-five and oh-six. But I wasn't here at the time, and with this just predicament we're in, and we're gonna, I believe we're gonna work our way through it.
Well, I keep beating the horse, but I, at that meeting, I understood him to say, we projected two thousand seven numbers, it was gonna look like this, because it was going that direction, and we based it on that, which is not really a very valid.
No, I say.
And that goes back to not really trusting their judgment as far as, you know, what pickle they got us in. So that's where they got to two thousand seven, they're projecting it would go out.
But I don't think, that's not good business.
That's not good business.
That's not good business, projecting something that hadn't.
But they, that's what they needed to do in order to make the numbers work.
And they also couldn't use tax in there, which is not even legal.
It wasn't a very conservative means.
No. But that's all they could use to make it sellable.
Well, Mr. Raely, if he didn't have the audit, of the county's budget, he wasn't doing his job. He should have before he obligated or advised us to obligate ourselves to that kind of expenses. That's what, that's what we paid him to do, so he should have audited the county's budget. And if he didn't, that's why we shouldn't trust him.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not arguing any of that.
I mean, we felt bad enough to dismiss him.
But to answer your question, once, to clarify everything, I believe Jeff's intelligent, sharp lawyer, but yes, I do believe he led us down a bad road.
Well, I guess, the only thing I'm looking at, Paul, is that I don't, I cannot for the life of me understand why any of you would pick up the phone to call him, when you know, and you feel, maybe it's bothering them, but.
Well, I feel like.
If you feel that you couldn't trust him, why in God's name would you pick up the phone to try to use him with the kind of mess that we're in right now? Wouldn't it be better to get some fresh eyes on the deal to, I mean?
I, yes, it would be, but I, like I said once before, I, even when I called Attorney General, everybody, every name they gave me, they, they were, they're connected to Floyd Law Firm. And I'm gonna tell you something, you, it's like, you know, their, their lawyers, they're all, they all know one another.
Brotherhood.
It's a brotherhood, man, and you know, and it's no different than county commissioners, you know, we're kinda somewhat a brotherhood. I mean, we meet four times a year at Adco, and I'm sure in the trucking business, I'm sure Rick knows a lot of people that own trucking businesses. Same with Rock and Randy, I mean, you know?
Yeah, but I'll bet you if they screw them once, they don't deal with them again.
I, I'm sure they don't, but you know, it's all of, like, Randy summed it up, it's a brotherhood. And, but if there's not anymore, we have a EMS meeting, you wanna start over?
I've got a.
Okay.
I've got one statement, I guess.
All right, go ahead.
With the work that these three men have put in, they, they have taken all this time to do it and have dived into it way deeper than I think anyone else in this room has. And, and bringing a lot of knowledge about what has, about what has happened, what is going on. And I think that's a lot of valuable, valuable information and knowledge that would absolutely go to waste for the county if they, if, if they weren't allowed to serve on whatever type of trust or commission or whatever gets set up. I think that's just a, a total waste that the county cannot afford.
I'll go back to what I said before, I, when we, when we speak, it might not even be left up to the commissioners. And it might, it might not, I don't know yet.
I, I understand that.
Okay.
But if the commissioners have any say, or the people have any say, I think, I think it would, it would be, I, I think it would be an injustice not to let these men help because of all the background that they have put into it.
Okay.
I agree.
I appreciate that, now then. If anybody, nobody else has anything to say, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, go into an EMS meeting we have once a month, eleven o'clock. I'm gonna make a motion if we adjourn recess, commissioners meeting, go into the EMS meeting. Like, what do you have for us?
We've, um, excuse me. I can remember the same, same number. This month, what we did, we had, sort of got the golf ball dropped. We were there, just doing some golf work, too. That was on the sixteenth. We started a first responder class with local fire department, that's gonna get people that are certified to be, to be first responders. Our class is gonna be finished up on, on the thirteenth. So about a month after that is when we actually get, get the licenses, and you should have more first responders able to, to help us or help the police department, fire departments. On the thirteenth, and I, and I'll get with the, the fire department, we're having a, we're having an EVO class, which is Emergency Vehicle Operations Course, and we'll have, have that up to the old Chalk Talk community building. And you have to be, you're supposed to be certified, even, and the fire department's supposed to be certified to, to drive the fire trucks, and stuff like that. So at that class, they get their certifications, and, you know, and fire departments have to have that certification for their employees or firefighters to drive those vehicles for their insurances. So does, does a lot of things teach them some valuable information, you know, have the fire department, that guy set up when you get to see. Had a, had an incident with, I guess, law enforcement or a, I think he was on Duvian at the forum, city officer, I forget the name off the top of my head.
Oh, um.
Danny?
Yeah.
Who?
Jack Danny.
Jack Danny.
Yeah, Jack Danny, I was thinking.
Well, we had a little bit of an incident with him. Kinda getting into it with our, our people, I'm, I'm gonna visit with him, I haven't had, not having no pride, I haven't contacted him.
Are y'all going to Skogea County too?
Uh, i- if they call us. Not, not very often. Yeah.
He's chief over there.
He does both, he's on, on the Brooklyn Fire Department, anyway, there was a call up the dam. But we went in on the north side of the dam, he was on the south side, and they were giving us directions. And, and basically, they thought we were on the south side and we're on the north side, so nothing, nothing major, but he, he, he was kind of confrontation, I just wanted to know about that. I'm gonna visit with him, and, and, he, he's also, he, you know, a couple of years ago, he ran into our ambulance, told our ambulance out, I didn't know if y'all remember that.
Well, when he was.
He, he's gung ho, I'm, I'm giving him credit.
When he was kind of patient with you, now, was he, was he on, was he in the forum, was he working for the forum police department?
Yes.
And why was he on the south side of the dam?
Well, that, you know, that's.
He works for the county also, part-time, I think.
Right, but he was, he worked.
I don't know what he.
Part-time for the county.
Who he was working for at that time.
And that's what I say, but he was on the forum police department. Well, when you get on the south side of the, you're in Haskell County, you're not in Forum, and you're not in Pittsburgh, Skogea County. What was he doing over there, is what I'm saying?
Well, I, I agree. I'll, I'll say it anyway. Now, I, I'm gonna visit with him, you know, and just make sure that, to get his side of the story. He, he gave our, our guys a what for, and, and in front of patients and that kind of stuff, and that, it wasn't called for. I'll let you know how it comes out, turns out.
The emergency manager had a problem, I let him too, during that storm, we got all that wind. He called her, Tim told him, could you get off the radio, and they was, you know, doing what they was supposed to be doing.
Okay. Okay, so I need to go do it with her.
Let her, let her know too.
Really? So, yeah, so at least I'm not the only one that's had enough.
How many first responders have you got in your class, your certification class?
Uh, I forget the number now. I can find out more.
Is it ten?
Yeah, about that, yeah. Ten, twenty, exactly. At one time they, they had signed up for thirty. I don't think the class is that big. But very well could be. I can be, I can give the exact number.
Are these, are these people that are going through it again for a refresher or?
No, they, they, they're random. Yeah, they, they, there's just a need for it, you know, they, they stick it out, you know, when we hold the class. I, we probably do one a year now, not everybody. I've only got, I believe I had two first responders that actually work for us, or maybe two. And they can drive the ambulance, they must have, they can't move back with a patient by themselves, but they can, they can assist, you know. And we try to, we try to use as many first responders as possible because they know the area so well, you know. And they live here, they're on that field. And the people that we hired oftentimes, they don't have that, that luxury, you know, so. We rely on them. Yeah, we've got a real good dispatch here. The dispatcher do a good job. They help us out and that kind of stuff. Try to use as many resources as we can. Call one stays, stays the same. Forty-one calls total. I think of thirty-five of those were, were gonna be transfers out of hospital here, so. Relationship with the hospital seems, seems to be well, going well. I haven't heard anything else. One time we had the following situation.
So they, they resolve that problem?
I believe so.
I don't have anything to do with it.
I'm making a motion, let me look at your camera.
I'll leave it.
Y'all getting any lane over here?
No.
Spot is here and there. And so if you're in the right spot.
At home, it's midnight. You've got green grass.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'd go Texas last weekend with my grandfather. When you get south of Parris, it's dry for about forty miles. It's green from McAllister to Parris. And from south to Parris, it's just dry as a bone. And before you get to Mount Pleasant, it turns green again. It's just.
You're spotting some hay, huh?
I, I guarantee for about forty miles, it's solid brown. And I'm in the grass about that, so.
Arthur Fair?
Hospital.
Yes.
Are y'all doing your second tenant, third tenant? You get a, you get a third?
Uh, we had, we done a second.
I'm on, I'm on second, Marvin. No, we're in EMS lady. We're in EMS. We're fixing to go back to county commissioners.
I'm sorry.
That's, uh.
I thought, oh no. That's what it was. I did, I thought, oh my goodness, no.
No, we're not, we're not.
We gotta go back.
That's on that other agenda.
Just wanted you to be on video.
This is Debbie Thane, the backbone of CD District Two.
Nothing, no, I'm just.
Everybody has some counting. She covers eight counties, not just one, but eight.
Assist Rosen, Rosen bridges?
Rosen bridges, rideaways, there's nothing she can't do.
Thank you, Paul.
I'm being honest. If you have a question.
Watch out, he's fixing to ask.
I know, I know.
We have to finish Long Valley Road now. Finish Long Valley Road now, Debbie.
Yeah, Star Road too, Omaha.
Going anything? Thank you.
We gotta stay, we gotta stay posted.
Yeah.
I'm just open. All right. I made thirty, you know.
Yeah, I made a motion for number six.
No, we hadn't got seven yet.
Seven, right.
We made, Marvin made the motion on number six. We haven't got seven yet. Oh, five. Oh. Oh, wait. It's all up there. That's what I'm gonna like to see, it sounds all right. See, I can say the third.
Marvin, how's it?
Yes. I'd like the motion on that on number eight. I'll take it.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Marvin Nala?
Yes.
Yeah.
Item number nine, discuss the two percent service agreement for SOSU or CCAP tax program for county judges' office. I'll say it there.
Phil, can I come, my doctor made me get that. I didn't know it, but you worked a lot, so send me another trip down. I figured you did. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I might get one from number nine. Marvin second.
Paul Story?
Yes. Zero, McKeon, discuss the two percent July, Michael Court, county clerk. Court clerk, I'm sorry, court clerk. These shoes are any baby?
Y'all paying him with this one, signing it over to the state?
Arthur Fair? Yes.
Yeah.
Marvin, I'm gonna sign that on the door, it's on there.
You sign there, there and there, all the rest of you sign there.
Yes. Item number eleven, discuss and take possible actions to prove three twenty-four claim for Star Road Project in CD Two. Arthur Fair?
Yes.
Marvin Nala?
Yes.
Paul Story? Yes. And Judy wrote call on item eleven. Item number twelve, this is for the health, assuming this, being self-told nation. Good commission, health, county health department, you know, and we list that every year, Marvin.
Hey, Randy, I'm just gonna tell you, seventeen first responders are in the class. And I think that they have to go and get certified, so depend on them.
They're in the class?
Yeah. They're good size.
How's that time going, CD?
It's going, Mike, Mike had a heart attack today.
Well, is he there?
I don't know. There's no reason to go to St. Francis right now.
Is that bad?
Yeah.
Who is this?
Mike.
Mike Waniger, our, our inspector, construction inspector, had a heart attack.
I don't see that.
He's retiring age.
I don't guess it matters how, you have all the tablets.
I mean, he could retire, I do believe, and, and if they do open heart, he probably will, you know, so I don't know. We're just hoping they're not fixing the sustenance, you know, but we should know something today. We should leave, please.
Well, I didn't know it.
Yeah.
Yeah?
So we're short of inspector.
What about the guy that was in the science shop, the CD, he's licensed, that's back now, isn't he?
We got, might be vegan of the last day.
He can inspect.
Yeah. I mean, we're okay. We're not gonna suffer yet, but you know.
If he has open heart surgery, we might be looking at.
Heart, I mean.
Get somebody new.
Yeah, we, they already got to owe somebody, so.
Saying everything, I don't see it. I don't know, I heard that through the break.
Yeah, he is.
That's gonna be another problem.
Yeah.
So you thought about anybody?
Yeah, but I did the call back. So it's hard to get an engineer.
Extremely hard. Pipe for us, Brett. We're gonna tire somebody, we're gonna, we're gonna be sitting up there to have one. Yeah, you can farm it out, we still here. On item number twelve, I'm gonna make a motion at least, up our lease with Chalk Call Nation for the health department. With no other business, I'm gonna make a motion, we are down. Do you have, I'm sorry. Do what? Did you ever do item four? Yeah, I did item four. I thought you moved it down. No, I moved item number five down, but if anybody has any. Four and five, are you? Does anybody have any new business?
Yeah, I've got a question is, uh, we met Billy's office, they discussed it about the trust indenture of the, uh, of the facilities authority, about the legalities of it and where the copy of the trust indenture is. And it is a public trust and, and you said, we all agreed that nobody knows of any meetings or agendas or minutes or anything on that that's ever been done?
I, I did agree to that. And do you know of any, Marvin? If you've had any trust authority meetings?
Haskell County Public Facilities Authority, you thinking of? I, I don't know personally, but I had, there was a little bit of information at my shop on it. I thought I brought, I think I brought something you did, or Randy did.
This, this was pertaining to the trust, and Rick's asking about it on Craig.
What, what's he doing?
Trust authority that is enacted right now that you three are on.
Well, the question is, is whether they're even on it or not to go. The re, this is a resolution adopting it in November fourteenth of Ohio. And they appointed Sam Cole, Henry Few, and Kenny Short as trustees. Question is, has there ever been any meetings, uh, minutes, records of any kind that ever appoint new board members?
Well, I, I asked that question once. Of course, I know this is coming from Jeff Riley. The way I was, it was implying to me, Rick, that whoever the commissioners are, that is the trust authority. Now, whether that be legal or not, I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying, that's what I was told.
Can we get a copy of that trust indenture and read it and see? It says it's on copy in the county clerk's office.
Which shouldn't be a problem.
Do you know if it's there? Do you know where it's at? A copy of the trust indenture?
I mean, a copy could be made of it. I believe I read it in the bond book.
I don't think that would be a problem getting that, I don't think.
Well, the other question is, and we discussed it in another meeting, is how are y'all voting and acting, uh, on business there if, if it's not up to date?
There hasn't been any business done.
Well, you refinanced it and you borrowed money. Uh, and voted for that. I mean, you're acting, really, you're acting, uh, it seems like we're acting as the trust authority in the commissioner meetings instead of a meeting of its own. It is a public trust, it says.
I agree with that, Rick. And you know, that's the reason I spoke to y'all Thursday. I do wanna get this right. Because there's more to it than I brought up that, that needs to be dealt with. Besides just that, we got a bigger problem than that, than I had brought, told, said anything about it. I mean, you're right, we, we need, we need without a doubt to start getting some legal advice and get this set up right because some other situations that we're, we're gonna have to take care of.
Wes Reed won bringing up in the meeting so that we can decide, y'all can vote, whatever, to decide what we're gonna do to get this current, if it's not. And nobody's aware of any business, any action that's been done on this for the last several years.
The only meeting I think you'll find is when Kenny set it up, and I ain't throwing him under the bus, and I'm just saying, he, he's the one that approached Jeff Riley about refinancing that one time. I think we did go a quarter percent pledge. I, I may be wrong, but I think we were in a public trust authority meeting then, I think, because I think that's been a few years ago, so I don't remember if, if the other meeting, but I think that would be the last one. But with some of the issues that we have, that, that's gonna be kind of minor there, Rick.
Here's something that the district attorney said about it. It's a may be and probably was the case that the authority was created simply to facilitate the issuance of the bonds for the construction of the county jail without any intent to operate and administer or oversee the jail facilities. The evidences of this during this review are the ties of the trust and the makeup of the trust statements. And it is also my understanding that the operation of the jail since the creation of the authority has always remained a responsibility of the Haskell County sheriff and never been turned over to the authority. of the Haskell County sheriff and never been turned over to the authority.
Well, the operations, I understand, but we're talking about the ownership.
That is.
There should be.
One question that I have, I'm gonna get to talk to.
There should be meetings being held, just like you have a commissioner meeting. There should be one for that trust. It should be weekly, monthly, bi-weekly, or whatever you feel need necessary that you have it. And it should be documented, recorded, and, and run as an open act meeting.
In my opinion, we have other issues to deal with, and that's the reason I was thinking we need to seek some legal advice, because when we seek our legal advice, you know, we go through the other issues that we're gonna be looking at.
Well, you may have to get this current before you can do any other issues.
Correct, that's the reason that I'm wanting to get one set up for certain rate, so when we do get to where, if we ever do get there, we, we will be prepared. But that, you know, I mean.
So is somebody gonna try to locate this trust indenture?
I mean, if he comes out, we can, you know, see if you can.
Well, I think it needs to be looked into and see what it is. I mean, not just let it go on like it's been. I understand it says that the, uh, three commissioners, the trustees, but the three commissioners, it's, it's not named here, it's not here no more. Has it?
Well, I was told, like, once again, I, I, like I said, I don't.
Play that sense that it's just a succession.
Right, I mean, that's what I was told, but.
Okay, it don't say anything about successive in this. That's the reason I was wondering what the copy of the actual indenture says.
We'll have to look it up and, and get it straightened out. I mean, I agree with you, Rick, we, we need to get the, we, we need to get that and some other issues taken care of soon as we seek some legal advice and get, get it set up because.
Okay, so will we have it by next Monday meeting? Can we get that?
I mean, we should have.
I mean, I don't know, we, we might get this safely.
Well, no, it's like, we got.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot about Clark more. We should have tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay.
Now we're getting someone like a motion there, Jerry.